Yes, I'd like to call the Finance Committee to order. Roll call.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Lozara.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Shaki. Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here. I'd like to remove the remote attendance to the next committee meeting, which is, uh... Oh, we didn't approve the minutes?
Yeah.
I need a motion to approve the minutes, January 31st, 2013.
Make the motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, remote attendance, I'd like to put that at the next committee meeting, um, which is what, Jeff?
February 28th.
February 28th. Motion, I need a motion at the table. I'll make an informal motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, items to be considered for future meeting budget 2014, February 28th, residence agreement in April. Need a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion.
Second. A second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Call the Public Works Committee to order. Make the minute taker the same people are present. I need, I'll make a motion to approve the January 31st, 2013 minutes. That is my motion.
Second.
Corrections, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? No, pose. Item number four, reported recommendations contract award to H.R. Green not to exceed amount of $249,459 for Phase Two engineer service of Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road intersection safety improvement. That is a motion? Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Questions? Mr. Woods. Alderman Woods.
How is it that, um, none of this was in here before? We didn't, I just don't get, we didn't think that we needed to do the right away and do the, the extra survey and negotiating and, and all the other things that are here? We didn't think that we had to do any of that before?
The only thing that's new in this, the Amendment One was, uh, previously presented to the committee back last August, September. We provided assigned Amendment Number One to I.DOT. I.DOT ended up holding on to the amendment for a little, for a while. We thought the right-of-way negotiations and appraisals would be performed by I.DOT District One by coordinating with them. They had indicated to us that, uh, they would like that work to be covered under our contract and covered as part of federal funds. They weren't gonna do that work themselves. And so the right-of-way negotiations and appraisals were something that was needed and was gonna be covered as part of the, uh, federal funds that were available. So with that being said, I.DOT was going to say, hey, instead of, they were in the process of processing Amendment One, Number One, they said, why not add that work to Amendment Number One? And then, as we were adding that into Amendment Number One, the only other item that was added to this amendment was the Metro work. And the Metro work consisted of, of the railroad crossing improvements as far as new gates, new signals. During the Phase One, it was anticipated that Metro would have their own consultant onboard and do that work themselves and then be reimbursed by the client, being City of Wooddale, and then reimbursed by I.DOT, I.DOT. Because the railroad improvements and gate improvements and signals were also all covered under federal funds. So with that being said, when we, we thought that in the interest of the project schedule and so on, we thought it would be best, because Metro had brought on a consultant to do that work, we had a meeting with Metro in early January. We coordinated with the City of Wooddale and suggested, hey, in order to move this along, because it's covered, the design engineering and the construction was gonna be covered under, uh, the federal funds also. We wrote a letter for the city to send to Metro recommending that we bring on a cons, approved Metro consultant and oversee that work under our contract. We met with Metro, Metro agreed and thought that was a good idea, a lot cleaner, um, kinda still following the Metro guidelines and so on. But the only two items that have been added to this, and again, this is only Amendment Number One, it's not a Second Amendment. It's the first amendment to this contract and the only new items to this amendment was the right-of-way negotiations and appraisals that are on the critical path at this point. And also the railroad improvements for the gates and signals, which also is gonna be covered under the federal grant money. So, um, does that answer your question? It was kind of a long answer to your question, but that's, that's how those two items got added. I.DOT did not process the amendment and when we approached them as far as, you know, seeing if they were gonna do right-of-way appraisals and negotiations, they said, hey, we're not gonna do it. Why don't you guys get your approved I.DOT consultants to do that work and put it under your contract? We haven't processed Amendment Number One. Why don't we include that, see if the city would be okay with that?
Okay, so essentially, they just shifted the financial burden from their budget to our budget, which is being covered by the federal grant.
It's all being covered under the federal grant, correct.
Right, so it's accounting things.
Well, it was always gonna be part of the project and part of the budget and being reimbursed by, to the city, by I.DOT and the feds, so as far as the grant money goes. It's just that we're kinda having, instead of Metro having their own consultant and submitting their invoices to the city to get reimbursed with the federal funds, we're acting, we're kinda making it cleaner by having H.R. Green oversee PB, who's gonna be the consultant, approved consultant, doing the railroad signals and gates. We're gonna be monitoring their work, receiving their invoices and sending their invoices part of our invoices.
Anything else? Mr. Woods? Yeah, the, the amount of the, uh, amendment addendum or change order, whatever we wanna call it, is that a, a not-to-exceed amount or can we go over that amount?
It's a not-to-exceed amount. So our, our project, whatever the current agreement amount, is a cost plus fixed fee. This would be additional funds that would be added to our upper limit of compensation. Half of this amount is subconsultant work to be done by others. Uh, I already mentioned PB, they're doing the work for the metric, for the rail signal improvements. And then we have three other approved I.DOT subconsultants that are gonna be doing the right-of-way appraisals and negotiations. So half of this supplement amount is primarily subconsultant work. The other work that's indicated in there was previously presented at the last August board as far as topo survey, uh, intersection study updates in coordination with ICC, utility coordination with COMED, metric coordination, and then project administration.
And then, and within that change, we're also, that dollar amount includes the engineering work necessary to bury the electrical lines in the same footprint?
It, it does not, because, uh, we met with COMED last week. I'm, uh, had a meeting with COMED. The, the dollar amount and man-hours that were allocated for that was to coordinate with COMED, meet with them a number, a couple times. Uh, COMED is going to, we express the city's interest in exploring the possibility of burying overhead utilities. The gentleman that's in cu, charge of this area is going to investigate the project site and get back to us with a rough design engineering costs and a construction cost. And they're also looking at possible other impacts as far as service connection costs that would be the city's responsibility. So right now, they're going to get back to us in four to six weeks and let us know what they anticipate as far as a recommended, um, suggestion as far as burying utilities within the intersection improvements and provide us with the cost. If the city is willing to proceed with their costs, we'll take it to the next step, but this amendment does not take into account the engineering as part of burying the utilities. Right now, we're in the, in the process of evaluating that.
So the verbiage inherent is just to cover those conversations that you had?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Joel Alderman Roy Wesley.
I guess this question is to our Public Works Director. Have you gone through this contract? And is there anything in this contract that could be into overruns? I'm kinda leery with engineers' contracts now since the thing with the water treatment plant. So, do you wanna address? I mean, for some reason, I got a feeling that, when, when we're cleaning these tanks, and I don't wanna get on the subject of that, but someone didn't do their due diligence when they did those con, when the things weren't done there. So, on both ends.
Alderman Wesley, I, if I understand your question correctly, you're asking me if I've gone through this contract to determine whether or not there is a potential to have overruns within this contract? I would suggest in a not-to-exceed, uh, arrangement that we would have the ability to monitor whether or not they would exceed the number that they've provided us. Now, I, I can tell you one piece of this, uh, maybe to piggyback on Alderman Woods's, uh, comment and concern. COMED works in a specific way. And that specific way that they work is if you want something done, you meet with them. You tell them you want something done. They spend a period of time evaluating that request. They put together a budget that they would charge you to do that work. And then to follow on with that, they give you a budget number or an actual number to build whatever you've asked them to build. And then they reconcile at the end of the job with what it actually costs them. Now, I, I point that out because one piece of this proposal here in front of you tonight is to have those utilities buried. And so what I heard, uh, you know, Mr. Hogan offer here tonight is accurate. And I think to that extent, there are these other items in here that I'm assuming he'll follow the same proper procedure and provide us credible, um, information as he develops, uh, the need for these items to take place. So I think if you're asking me, are these necessary components of making this project work? I think my answer would be yes. On a not-to-exceed contract, the city would monitor those, uh, units expended and determine whether or not those bills were appropriate for those particular tasks as the project proceeds.
Okay, could I go on? I just wanna make sure that you're not gonna come back to us on this contract or H.R. Green's gonna come back and says, well, you know, this was over and beyond or whatever, and it's still basically in the contract and I don't wanna get in the catch-22. That's why I'm putting the question directly to you, is saying, is everything in this contract? That I don't want no extras over here and say, well, you know what? It wasn't the contract, but that's over and beyond our, our scope so, so we're gonna charge you an extra. Because someone's gonna, I, I'm gonna have a very difficult time and if that's the case, someone won't, I'm, I'm gonna suggest someone's not being here if that's the case.
But I, I take the thing is, and, and let me feedback, the electrical is not in this proposal.
I, I understand.
So, we already got not-to-exceed $249,459.0, so it cannot go beyond that.
I, I think the director knows what I mean by what I'm saying. Not really? Yeah, okay. Um, like cleaning of the tanks of the sewer treatment plant. It says clean tanks, it doesn't say how to clean tanks in the, in the contract, basically how that is. And someone missed on that.
That's.
But that's.
Go ahead.
I'll discuss.
We aren't on that, but go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a different, uh, item.
I understand that, it's a different item, but.
It's hard to compare the apples to oranges here, it's a different contract.
It's an engineer, engineer. I'm not an engineer. So, I wanna make sure that we're spending the money wisely and not getting an extra bill for a hundred thousand dollars later.
Okay, yes.
I think it would be hard for me as your Public Works Director or anyone else as your Public Works Director to provide any guarantee that there will never on any contract be the need for additional service or a ch, a condition that was potentially interpreted as being an unknown. And I would love to offer that guarantee, but I, but I don't believe, maybe to, in response to your comment, that I could offer a hundred percent guarantee that in life, nothing will change.
Okay. I have just two questions. The railroad crossings, since that is gonna be contracted out with someone else, I forgot who you said. So, does this mean after we do this, do we have to send to Metro for their approval to sign off on? After they already pass a buck to us to do it? And will that delay the project because we know how Metro works?
No, actually, what we're doing is gonna accelerate the contract because we met with Metro. They've reviewed PB's scope of work and provide us input on their man-hours and their fee. Uh, they have very high regards with Parsons Springerhoff that if they don't perform something in their scope of work, that nine times out of ten, they leave money on the table. So, their, Parsons Springerhoff is a very respectable firm and they know what they're doing. We brought them on our contract because they're experts in doing rail signals and rail improvements like this.
Okay. I, I have two more.
Okay.
I added another one. The, we also talked about the water main over there to see if we could improve the, the water main because we've been having problems with that Irving Park water main and we thought maybe we could take some of this money and do partial of that water main. Is that, I don't remember, is that part of this?
The water main is part of the original scope of work to look at replacing it. Because it's a safety improvement with roadway reconstruction, um, we are looking within the project limits of the roadway that we're reconstructing, whether the existing water main falls under new pavement, that can we justify the federal funds to pay for that relocation? I can tell you this, that, um, we are trying to get that paperwork and evaluate the engineering with the water main to see if the roadway is impacting the water main, if we can justify ha, uh, putting federal funds towards that. But nine times out of ten, when you do something with water main with a local municipality and they wanna replace it and they're there by permit, it's the locals' responsibility if they wanna upgrade their water main to replace it at their cost. So, as part of this improvement, what we're trying to do is see if the roadway is impacting, the roadway design is impacting the water main and if we can justify federal funds, eighty percent of the cost, to replace the water main. That way, the city doesn't have to worry about it.
Right.
But, again, if we do the roadway improvement and it's, the water main is in old condition, needs to be replaced, there's an advantage to the City of Wooddale to replace the water main at the time of the roadway improvement because of the maintenance of traffic and so on. It makes a lot of sense to do it when the roadway improvement's done.
Okay. Do you have a hand up, man?
Yes. And just to follow up, H.R. Green is also working with the Congressman to making sure that the language is correct and possibly get the entire water main, the whole two miles or two and a half miles.
Right.
At twenty percent.
Congressman Roskam. At eight, eighty percent.
Eighty percent. And actually, I spoke to, um, H.R. Green and I said, well, Congressman Roskam is no longer our Congressman. We need to approach the other one. All right, and then I have, are you done, man? Yes. I, I have one other question. We have paid out money for this project in that, in I.DOT. I believe the way we pay out, we pay it out and I.DOT reimburses us. Have we received any paychecks from I.DOT? And what is the status on that?
My understanding is that there's been conversations with Brad and ourselves as far as the paperwork. I can tell you that we have noticed, we have a formal paper trail that we have noticed to proceed with this contract from I.DOT Springfield. And again, I hate pointing the fingers at I.DOT, but with the joint agreement, we've been following up with them. But I can tell you right now that as soon as, if this amendment gets approved, they're kinda tied together, the joint agreement. So, they're trying to process and make the reimbursement happen as soon as possible. But the way I.DOT operates, they sometimes, with the people they have, limited resources in Springfield, they're tying this amendment and they know it's coming. They're waiting to, for this amendment to go through, to process everything at the same time. That's what's going on.
So we pass this amendment, which I'm going to vote yes for this amendment. So you're trying, tell me now, that once we pass this amendment, I may see a check in the next two months or three months down the line? Or am I going to be paying, even though I.DOT said they owe me the money or am I paying for a bridge that's unknown that the city's gonna be stuck with? I mean, I see my point.
No, I, I understand your point and, uh, I've worked with I.D.O. a number of contracts for a long time. They're, they happen to be one of our better paying co, uh, clients as far as turnaround goes. They usually try to pay bills within thirty days. In this case, because there's more than one invoice down in Springfield ready to be paid, my understanding is that all the invoices that have been submitted to date would be paid as one altogether, added altogether as one slump sum check to the City of Wooddale.
Okay. All right, so any other questions, concerns? I have a motion on the floor, I have a second. Let's do a roll call vote on this, please. Now, keep in mind, whatever this vote is, we're going back in the council meeting right after this for this final vote because there's, there's, there's some crucial deadlines that we need to make to keep this project on track. Just, you know that.
There's always a deadline.
I, I understand that, but it's crucial. All right, so do a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Okay. So we'll have a meeting after this meeting to, to the final blessing. Yes, Alderman Roy Wesley.
Are we gonna take a recess at the end of the committee meeting before I go into the council meeting?
We could. But, where it's.
Because I, I think.
Says that it's immediately following the conclusion of the committee meeting.
We'll take a break after this, though. Okay?
Because I have, I have some other questions, but I wanna make sure I put it in the right way, so I wanna talk to them.
Okay. All right, item number, uh, let's go, item number five. Ported on recommendation, uh, driveway apron replacement. Who's taking the lead on this one? Because I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll take the lead on this this evening. There are really two ways to handle, uh, street projects. Resurfacing or reconstruction. Resurfacing is what you commonly obviously see as removing a couple inches of asphalt throughout the roadway and going ahead and, uh, replacing that asphalt with, uh, some fresh new asphalt. In the process of that, from time to time, curbs and gutters are impacted, uh, sometimes specifically in front of people's driveways. And in that case, uh, what, uh, the current staff direction is for the contractor to remove approximately two feet of the homeowner's apron, uh, in their driveway and replace just that two feet of apron. In other cases, when we do reconstruction projects, that's removing the entire roadway, uh, also in many cases, removing the curb and gutter, um, changing the grade of the overall roadway. And in the process, we oftentimes will replace the entire driveway because it's necessary since the road grade has changed. So, uh, this evening, staff is seeking some guidance from, from this committee in terms of how we wanna proceed. And as such, we've come up with three recommendations or options for you to discuss and to consider and hopefully give us some guidance on how to proceed. Uh, the first such option is to continue the existing policy in both the resurfacing of roadways and the reconstruction of roadways. Resurfacing, of course, is, uh, as I said earlier, uh, removing the two feet at the, at the bottom side of, of the citizen's driveway and, and only replacing that. And again, when reconstructing, of course, as the roadway grades change, we would certainly remove the driveway and replace it in total if it was necessary to that project. Option two, uh, we're asking you to consider, uh, modifying the existing policy where, uh, we would go ahead and anytime we engage with somebody's driveway for whatever reason, uh, that we would replace that driveway in total, that apron in total. And, uh, so that's, uh, the second option to consider here tonight. And the third option for consideration would be, uh, what I'll call an enhanced, enhancement of our existing policy. And what that enhancement would look like is if the city were to, uh, have to cut that two feet of driveway in the resurfacing project, that would, we would send a notification to the citizen that would allow them the benefit of our contract terms with the contractor that's doing the roadway and allow them the opportunity to create a relationship with that contractor that the city would not participate in, to go ahead and, and use the, the benefit of, uh, an effective unit cost to spend their own money to, uh, do their apron beyond that two-foot section. So it's those three options tonight that we put before you and wanna encourage some dialogue and, and again, uh, try to leave this meeting tonight with, uh, some guidance from you on how you might wanna proceed for our community.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
I have some concerns with this, Rich. Our current policy, the City of Wooddale is always supposed to bring the property up to the standards where it was or better as when we cut into a driveway or do work on anywhere. Our policy, as far as I, I haven't seen it yet, uh, if you cut into a driveway, we talked about code joints before. I don't see it in the letter here about code joints. Or is it in our policy? I don't think it is. That's the first question. The second question is, if the person's driveway, if they use a wire mesh underneath, is the city gonna use a wire mesh the same way that they, the way that they took it out? I mean, those are the questions I have now. I probably will have more as your answer comes.
All right, uh, I appreciate the question. I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Hausman to address this question as well. Let me just give you a little bit of background. In June of this past year, I did a presentation in my former community after collecting a great deal of data from around the western suburbs. And what I found during that exercise was, I think, an important piece of information for folks here in this room tonight is that that two-foot practice. is that that two foot practice and policy is commonplace. It's the majority of communities in the western suburbs. The thinking behind that and, and the reason why that's been the practice for the majority of communities in the area and I would suggest outside of the area as well, is that we are replacing it in kind. We, we put back what was taken out. So we take two feet out and we put two feet back in. And so that has been the prevailing logic and that that cold joint can be addressed through what is a good common practice for most homeowners and that is to seal their driveways. And so I, I just, I'm just sharing with you again what the response to that question has been in, in other communities. And I would offer, you know, some of that information and I'll, I'll turn it over to Lou for maybe some more specific.
Could I add into this? The way that we get loose up here?
I guess that's fair, okay.
I was just going to speak to the current policy or the current way that we, the practice that the city's been going about. We have not been adding the cold joints to the driveway replacements. So at the two foot joint, there is not cold joints put in there. And in the case of the welded wire fabric, the wire mesh, that is also not part of the current city replacement standard. So those are not currently being done, correct?
Okay, is there adding now?
What's your, what was that?
He's done answering that question. You said you wanted that, Chairman.
So, in return, we're not bringing the, the concrete up to where it was before then? Because what you're doing to these residents here, you're cutting into their driveway. You're creating another hazard because you cut into their driveway that they paid for. And you're not taking any, you're not taking a precaution to fix that driveway with the cold joints of drilling those bars into the concrete and to preventing from, from that cracking. When you pour concrete, one slab, you're not going to have as much crack as if you cut into a piece of concrete. And if you don't put the cold joint in, you're going to have more of a chance of a cracking. So is that fair to our residents that are paying for their driveway in the first place? And we're not putting the property back to the original condition or better?
You're correct in the fact that we're not currently putting in the cold joints, we're not drilling in the dull bars. And so there is a potential for some movement between the two foot piece and the piece that was there before. And certainly introduction of another joint or a crack in that concrete apron is, is not a positive thing. However, with the width being two feet, we don't tend to see a lot of settlement difference between the new piece of apron and the old apron behind it. We don't typically see the cold joints put in on the resurfacing jobs in this area. The welded wire fabric, I do know of a number of communities that replace it when they replace the whole driveway. So they would replace the whole driver. It's, it's hard to splice in the two feet of that fabric, though, to get it to fit back in. So it, it's just, it's the, very difficult to actually make the construction work within that small area to put those things back in. But I, I hear what you're saying. They were there before or the welded wire fabric, in the case of that, it is there before and we don't currently put it back in. That's correct.
I really concerned about my residents in Wooddale and whatever precaution there is to make sure that cold joint isn't there, I'm, I'm going to make sure that's there if it's to replace the whole driveway. And it's to replace the whole driveway, whatever the council decides. Can't we put that in our policy of saying that you will put the cold joints in and, and, and bring it up to par and stuff like that? I mean, it's just, I mean, we got the road, we got the roadsalt that throws onto the driveway, which causes pitting and everything else. And you know, the residents are the ones that usually paying for the apron anyways. I don't see the city of Wooddale, when a house goes up, they pay for the apron. So, and I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying that we have to make sure every precaution that we have. So I guess my question is, could we put that in our policy?
I just want to, we, the staff is making one recommendation as to, to change the city's standard on the driveway replacements to improve the base course and provide a stone base in all cases to better support that piece of the apron that's being replaced. So it is not putting the cold joints in, but we are asking for additional and better compacted stone base to try to resist any type of settlement in that new piece. So it is one thing we are suggesting.
We can make that policy. That's not a problem. Problem is, do you want to spend the extra, whatever it was, four hundred thousand or three hundred fifty thousand for that construction year? That becomes a total council decision. And I understand what you're saying. As a resident, I would be upset, too. Some of that stuff is garbage. Policy decision.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
In return, what you're saying, I've seen some of these, these companies use that better compaction and stuff like that. I've seen some of their work. You've seen it, too. You're not going to, I'm not sitting up here and believing that. I mean, you can believe what you want, but I'm not. And it's just going to make, again, I just want to, the people pay hard earned money for their driveways and we're, we're, it's our job, if we're coming in to redo the street and making our streets better, it's our responsibility to make it the same or better.
Alderman Coles?
Well, we've been talking about this for a long time. Driveways, if the fellow's got rods in there or he's got the screen in there and we tear it up, we should put the screen back in. And if he's got rods in there, we should put it back the way originally. And that's even what, if it costs extra because a man, man decided to put in six good inches of cement with steel rods, let's replace it that way. Instead of this, you're talking about not doing it this way, not doing it that way, you've got to have a policy that if you cut into a man's driveway and you cut in two, three feet in and he's got bars in there, then you put bars in, in there to replace it. Otherwise, we could be here all night long talking about this. If you want to be, but I don't want to be here all night long to talk about a driveway that can be solved by just putting in the backs the same stuff that he had. If he had four inches of cement, you put in four inches. If he had six inches, you put in six inches. And if he had, if he had a, a black top and two inches of concrete on it, you put that in. What are we talking about? We're just, I don't know. I, that's my opinion.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you. First, I'm going to be a little nitpicky and bring us all back. It's the aprons or driveway approaches, not driveway. Everybody's saying driveway. The memo says driveway eleven times. And that's a whole separate subject that we would get into when you get into sidewalks and stuff. So just that we could clarify that, that we're just talking about the apron or the approaches. So people don't think that we're arguing over replacing their whole driveway. Second, to Alderman Roy Wesley, I mean, I, I agree. People spend a lot of money to live here. They, you know, put a lot of money in their homes for the most part. And it's a hard decision. But the flip side of, of that decision is I'm spending the other residents' money, too. And how many driveways am I going to fix with Roy's money or Eugene's money? You know, at a certain point, we have to stop. What that point is, we have to make that policy on what it is. But in order to get the most for the city, the biggest bang for the buck, I think we need to keep it, it, at least close to what the policy is now. If we take out two feet, we take out two foot. I mean, we can discuss whether they're taking out the two foot correctly and putting it in correctly. That's a whole nother conversation. But as the general policy rule, you know, are we going to stick with the two feet for the apron? Or are we going to get into then spending more money? Because it never stops. Because then what happens when they ding the sidewalk? They pull that out and then they hit the driveway and now we are going up the driveway. And how can you change the policy midstream on the project? So we have to really look at the whole project i- i- in one big picture of what's going to happen, what dominoes are affected every time we do one of these things. And I, and I just think as much as we had some complaints, and I, I got as many calls as anybody else, that the biggest complaint was the people that had or replaced theirs or had the nicer conditioned driveways got the two feet. The guy whose driveway did nothing and was falling apart benefited because there was no way to patch it and we had to replace it whole. So then it became, why did you replace his and not mine? And that's where this whole debate started again from. So I, I personally think that we need to keep it to the two feet. If two feet's three feet, you know, do we want to? I know we talked about compacting the stone, but who's going to watch him compact the stone? You know? Alderman Wesley's correct. I mean, I've seen him lay stuff. I mean, their idea of compacting sometimes is that the laborer walked across it. You know, if, in small areas, if they're doing a hundred feet of sidewalk, they, they run the compactor down there. But, so, I mean, let's not create rules that nobody's going to adhere to anyway just to make us feel good and then we're going to get phone calls because people are going to see that they're not doing the job that way. And we're going to get more phone calls. Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
I still would like to change the policy where you put the, the bars. The bars has nothing, Joe, what you, Alderman Coles, what you were saying is nothing to do with if it had a bar in the whole driveway or not. It's a bar that goes into the, drills into the concrete that you already separated. So I would like to change the policy and put that in.
Mr. Woods?
And the engineer and public works director can correct me if I'm wrong. But the, the problem with making that blanket statement is there's not always enough concrete to drill into. And when you go to drill into that remaining contract, concrete, it starts to break. And then we are taking two feet and five feet. Assuming everybody did their aprons correctly and they were five or six inches thick, I would agree a hundred percent, but we all know that that's not the case. So when you start, you cut that thing out and you hit three inches of concrete and you're going to try to drill into it with a bar and make it work, we're just going to create more problems. I'm all for doing something that would be better if it'll actually work. And again, one of you guys can correct me if I'm wrong.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Then in return, where there is five feet of concrete, you put it in.
But are we not going to get into the neighbor debate then? Well, I had four and a half inches, why didn't you? It's kind of the same argument we're getting. Again, I'm just looking to get something done that we're not going to debate every time that we, we do a project.
Our policy reads to make the property better than, in the original condition or better. And that's the bottom line. And we're not doing that for our residents. We're not doing it when we're taking our driveway out or their approach, approaching out, so. As far as I'm concerned.
Do we have any idea of what this would cost to, to add these bars or the wires that he's talking about? Because I, I, I think the majority of our driveways here in our, our city seem to be asphalt. Right?
Yeah, that's correct. A lot of the aprons are asphalt, so those wouldn't have the bars put in. It would be on concrete driveways with sufficient thickness to drill them. So it, it would be hard for me to estimate what the 2015 project would be in terms of cost addition. But you're right, it's not, it's a minority of the driveways that would be applicable to have the bars put in.
Mr. Coles? No, that's all right, go ahead, Mayor. Go ahead there. Mayor, please?
I got a question for... The only reason we're cutting into the driveways is because we're cutting the curbs for some reason. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. Usually, we, we, when we go down and we fix the roadway, doing a resurfacing project, we look for functional problems in the curb. And if we find cracks that hold water instead of channel the water down, then we replace the curb in that location. A lot of times, those repairs happen to be in front of a driveway apron. And in that case, we need to cut out two foot of the apron in order to install a form board for the new piece of curb. And that's why we have the, the hole there. So yes, it's only where we have curb repairs.
Follow up, Mayor, please?
The reason, I, I believe I said this once before, if somebody's putting in a new driveway, and, and this is where the biggest complaints are, a guy who puts in the new driveway, we cut into it. Is there something that our building department go out, check? Again, this could become costly as well. If the curb is no good, the curb gets replaced at the same time. I think that would be the city's expense. But then again, if we're doing it at that time, it's going to cost us more money because we're only doing twenty feet versus two thousand, right? Is, is there, I don't know, maybe, you guys are the engineers, you guys deal with the prices. Is there some thing in the middle there that could work?
One of the benefits of the city publishing their capital improvement program with a five year road program on it is that people can see when their street is programmed to be repaired. And hopefully they, we can direct them to look at the program and what year their roadway is going to fall in. So if they're contemplating a driveway replacement, they can kind of see when the city might be doing adjacent work to their driveway. And that, in that respect, they could probably work with our building department here to try to coordinate those improvements. That might be helpful.
Mayor, please, follow up?
Sorry, there was another thing I mentioned that, you know, residents could look, we can inform them. But I think the argument was, well, if they're not on, on for six years, that means I have to let my driveway deteriorate for another six years before I can actually do my driveway. I think that was part of the discussion we had that night when I mentioned that, the last time, right? So, I don't know, I don't know what to add.
Mr. Coles?
I think if we look in a book on a building, that's, you'll, you'll find out that our book calls for six inches of reinforced concrete on a driveway. But a lot of people, a lot of the guys, they don't put six inches of wood up. They put two by fours and they pour up to the two by fours. So it's, you, and you can find that on, on a, on a driveway that's just been done because you wait less than a year and you'll find a good crack in it. And where you won't find that in, one that's got six inches and reinforced. So it, it depends upon what you, what you, what the man spends in the first place. And I think he should get replaced, the stuff that he got replaced. Now, a lot of the stuff is done by the city when they rebuild a street. They put in, they put in the curbs and they, they put in the sidewalk. They don't always make it mandatory that sidewalks put in. Which we tried to and we got voted down several times on that. But if you put in the, the curb to come up on the driveway, the flat part on the driveway, usually the company that's doing the, the street usually pours that. And they can pour anything they want because it actually belongs to the city. It doesn't belong to the, to the person who, it's on city property. So you've got to remember that, too. That's all I got to say.
All right. So are you, are you looking for attractions or what are we looking for here? I'm about ready to make a motion.
I think I would like folks to make a motion on which option that they prefer, so...
I make a motion, lead a policy as is. Do I have a second on my motion?
I'll second it.
Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
I didn't raise my hand, but...
Well, you were, okay, so you don't, okay.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Woods?
Again, I don't want to be the one shooting anything down. If, if there's something that we can do... I- i- if there's something that we can do that doesn't create more problems than it solves and has incremental cost, I'm open for that. And I, as I think everybody else up here is. You know, my, my big concern is that we create a policy that's gonna just create more problems and more headaches and get more complaints, so it's... Then it doesn't even become an issue of whether I wanna spend the money or not. It's how many, are, you know, how many residents do I wanna tick off? And, and the more we do this, the more we're gonna have issues. So whatever it is we decide, that's why I, I'm opting for staying the way it is until we could come up with an interim policy afterwards or, or something that, to do a better job, you know, we can sit and, and talk this through and, and have it make sense. Thank you.
Do you have a motion? I have a second. I have a question. Alderman Roy Wesley.
I just want... So are we gonna give staff direction to find out how many concrete approaches do we have, or to look at that?
So you are asking staff to go down every street and count how many con- oh, we got a GIS. That's right.
Yeah, we have one of those.
Go ahead.
I think what we're gonna do is, if we're gonna go with that maintain current option, we'll go and we'll look, you know, what can we do off of that current option, like a hybrid or whatever scenario. But we're not gonna figure that out as we sit here tonight.
Okay.
So if we can get a majority on option one, then we can go from there.
Right. I just wanna make sure that we're gonna look at that because, again, when we're voting on this, I wanna make sure we're giving them better than what they have.
Okay, Mr. Woods.
Could we say, just to make sure that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle? The many things that we're doing in the city that would come back at a certain time, with maybe some recommendations or...
I was thinking after budget.
Put out a memo or something so that we know that it doesn't get lost and, and the rest of the board can be happy to...
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
I'll say yes, as long as they protect the people.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Okay. All right, item number six now. Pay request number nine, Maxwell Construction Corporation. Further north wastewater treatment plant upgrade phase one A project is not in the not-to-exceed amount of five hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Could you, uh... Mr. Director, could you give me an update on the sewer treatment plant? Or would you like to bring it next committee meeting? I would like a full update on it. Where we are, how much money? Are we behind, on schedule?
Uh, we provide a weekly report, or a monthly report on that. And then information's available tomorrow through our normal communication process. In there will include, you know, the status of that project. Beyond that, is there something specific you'd like me to address here tonight?
There is, but I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Woods.
Yeah, could somebody, um, give me an answer on how, how do we handle the waivers and the payment? Are we collecting all the waivers upfront, then we give the payment? I know that we had a, a little glitch or a bump in the road. It's always a big concern of mine, so just kinda like a, a quick rundown on how we're handling that.
Yeah, to address your question, the pay application is taken to committee. It's brought before you, after the engineers reviewed the submission. After I've received it, I bring it again here to committee. We have until council before the final authorization and release of the check.
Wait a minute, maybe he's...
Yeah, let me cut you off. I, I get that, that the timing.
How we pay it.
But they submit the, their contractor's statement and their sworn statements and my reading shows that they submit it one waiver, so they have no waivers for any of the subcontractors. Are we cutting them the check in hopes that they get all the waivers? And is that a potential issue? Is my question.
Checks are not released until we get the full waiver in our hands and receive that in the city's offices. The checks are never released until that happens.
Well, I think, I know where you're going with this. I think his, correct me if I'm right here, I think his consideration, because he has a lot of subcontractors on this. Are those subcontractors submitting their waivers to get paid? Or are we just giving this check to Maxwell and we don't even know if there's subcontractors being paid? And then, potential down the line, I think our, his concern may be his subcontractors aren't going to get paid, all of a sudden we got, they aren't gonna work. Am, am I close?
Close enough. Close enough.
Yeah, go ahead.
Respond to that. Again, we take this to committee. It gets advanced to council. The city staff does not release the checks until we receive all of the subcontractor waivers. Then the check is given to Maxim. That's the current process.
Mr. Woods.
Just so we're clear. Every subcontractor, every work, anybody working on that job who's owed any money on that contractor's statement is giving you their final waiver, partial waiver, whatever it is. Document it before you give anybody one dollar.
What's in front of you this evening is the value of the cut, check that we intend to cut next Friday. Maxim and its subcontractors have to submit all of their waivers in full for work performed up until this pay estimate before we will release that check on Friday.
Mr. Woods.
And just for my clarity. The payout's five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, whatever the number is, a big number. One subcontractor who's, let's say they're owed ten thousand dollars, does not submit his waiver, you do not give them the five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars until that guy gives his waiver for ten thousand. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Mayor, please.
On this update we're getting tomorrow, I think I know what the frustration is at, at the other end with Alderman Roy Wesley. I'm hearing all kinds of stuff, thirty days behind, forty-five days behind, sixty days be- I, I don't know what's just the right date. Is somebody gonna give us a straight answer? I, I think I saw an email. They're working on the electrical lines so they can't clean the tanks. So is that putting them behind more? I don't know. But, but, just looking for clarification, right?
Rich?
On February fifth, we had a monthly progress meeting. And during that progress meeting, a schedule, revised schedule, was discussed in that discussion. That revised schedule shows them being eighteen days past what the original contract completion date was. Now, in that schedule, that's eighteen days beyond there, there's no telling for certain whether they're going to be able to accomplish that. It may be in my opinion, or someone else's opinion, that they'll never in a million years finish that project on that timetable. But our contract requires that they provide updates to their schedule. They have done so. And in response, our consultant, our engineer, is required to respond to them when they do a schedule update and ask them for additional information. And so where we stand right now in terms of schedule is, that is what Maxim believes will be their end date. Eighteen days past what was originally contracted. Again, what happens in contracts like this is either they meet that milestone or they do not. But right now, we're working within the framework of the contract. The framework of the contract requires them to provide schedule updates. And so their latest scheduled completion date is eighteen days beyond what was originally contracted for.
Go ahead.
Okay, so eighteen days. That's another number. And, and that's, that's the whole, I mean, and let's face it. They could work a few Saturdays, boom, catch up, and, and come in right on time, which is possible. The, some of the concern I've heard is, well, we've gone out to bid. The next guys are coming in. Are they gonna be pushed back two months? And what's, what's the deal? What happens then? That's why I'd like to know exactly, or as best you can. And I understand you just gave us the eighteen...